Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, November 5th. We are coming to you, whoa, slow down. We are coming to you hybrid from the Savage Educational Center in the school committee room. Before we start, I would ask all that are in attendance, who are able, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the warrant report. For today's meeting, I signed payroll warrants in the amount of $2,185,706.81. I signed accounts payable warrants in the amount of $160,599.37, $9,614.27, $22,480.78, $85,003.77, $943.76, and $25,630.72 for a grand total of $2,489,979.48. Are there any questions from the committee on warrants? No. Moving along, we're next going into public comment.
Actually, Mr. Chair, there is no correspondence to the school committee tonight.
Okay. Perfect. Ha, I missed correspondence, so there's no correspondence. Anyone signed up for public comment through your office today?
They did not.
They did not. Is there anyone here in the crowd that is here to speak? Yes, so before I invite you up, I just want to go over just a couple of highlights for public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to come and share their thoughts, opinions, feelings with the school committee. It is not a conversation in the sense that like if you ask a question, we can answer that. It does not exceed 30 minutes. Each person has three minutes to speak, so I will use my phone to time. I will try to give a 30-second warning, but then after that, three minutes is up, that is when your time to speak would be over. So if you would like to come up, introduce yourself, state your name, and go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name is Giulia Leone. I am a parent to two children who are currently in Norre Public Schools in fifth grade and third grade. I'm here tonight in regards to the redistricting update and looking forward to hearing more. I am beyond surprised that the boundary lines approved in scenario one are not lasting, especially after spending $60,000 with the consultant Sanborn Geospatial, forming the elementary committee, whose objectives included to balance school building capacities to account for future growth. These lines were just approved under a year ago. I feel that multiple years should be utilized to backtest the boundary lines, so we are not moving students each year. And based on the agenda items and the supporting documents, I would like to call the attention to sections JC and JCA of the school committee manual policy. The policy, as I read it, only grants the superintendent authority to make exceptions to attendance lines for individual children, not streets, not neighborhoods, not communities. The school committee should be approving any district map changes for attendance areas, and I suggest this be added to the scheduling of future agenda items for the school committee. I hope this is a collaborative review process with data shared in a transparent way. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? No. With that, I will declare public comment closed at 7:09 PM. And a reminder to the public, if you would like to speak on behalf of anything, there are two ways that you can do that. You come in person, you show up, you can sign up and speak during the time in the meeting that we reserve for public comment, or if you are, if it's a hybrid meeting, you could sign up through the superintendent's office the day of the super, excuse me, the day of the school committing, it's November, the day of the school committee meeting up to noon, so you'd have to call, register with the superintendent, and then you would get a link if it was hybrid to be able to jump on. So that is just a reminder, and we thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. So with that, we're moving on to the superintendent report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hiltz. The good news is, is that I am not making any recommendations to change district lines tonight. I will share that as I, as I work through the redistricting process, I talk to many people about the considerations that I'm making for the planning around redistricting, knowing that the numbers that we have coming in the district for next year will be different than what was projected three years ago from Sanborn, or two years ago from Sanborn. So in my transparency, I will say, I've gone through the spreadsheet and ideas with the PTA and PTO advisories, with the superintendent advisories, with my cabinet and principal teams, and that word obviously got out, as well as the considerations that I'm making in the memo that I shared with the community on, actually drafted that on Friday. And I looked at more information since that date, and I will share that tonight with you as well. So why don't I go to the memo first and share that? So first of all, where are we at with the process? I just, you know, this is going to be, it's not a process that's done yet. We've identified every student so far for 2026, 2027 that we know of based on their actual address, actual addresses. We have now added those to a spreadsheet. This is a working spreadsheet document that will be updated as we go. I have made some changes already, but as I, as I shared, I shared this out with most folks on Friday, and then it opened up to the public on Monday. We do not have kindergarten numbers yet based on the new addresses. We do have a census that we get every year. Dr. Bowyer and his team get the census every year. That census for kindergarteners typically from what is collected at that time in November rises about by 50 students or so in January when we actually have the registrations. We did consider moving registration up to December. However, given the holiday season, we didn't think we would get the number of folks that we wanted to, and so we decided not to do that just yet. I have now done an interest survey to all of the elementary general education teachers, not as a definitive, you know, you say you would like to move or shift schools or grades, but is there any interest in shifting grades or schools? Because we know when we open up a K-4 Willet Elementary School, we're going to have to have a highly qualified staff there for grades three, four, one, two, and the kindergarten teachers that are there. So there will have to be some transfers made. And so we're working through that. I had 68 teachers now that have provided me with information on whether they're interested or not, and there are some that are interested, and they're all commenting very detailed on kind of the scenarios they would like to see if they, if they are deciding to move. So to the teachers out there, there's no decisions made yet. Thank you for the interest that you provided. Once we identify the number of sections in these schools, we'll really then be able to figure out kind of who we need to transfer and what grades we need to fill. My goal obviously is to ensure that everyone has a position, that has a position now, pending any other budgetary impacts that we might see this year, but also ensure that every school K-4 has highly qualified teachers and the expertise is there in the grade levels. So that will come. I'm hoping to get most of the transfers done by the end of November is my goal. And what you hear later tonight is that I'm not, I'm not ready to make any decisions on the final section number because we really have to wait until January to identify how many kindergarten classes there can actually be. The elementary principals are forming kind of a meeting, a task force, to talk about all the small nitty-gritty things in terms of transition. You know, what are the PTAs and PTOs going to look like, right? Willet right now has one that's kind of shared with the LMPA. They're going to have to have their own now. We want to make sure that those things are in place, so that's one. What kind of facility changes have to be made to the schools and the Willet? I've been in conversations with Mr. Ricardi and Dr. Bowyer, and the Willet School has never changed since it was a kindergarten, since it was an elementary school. So there are no physical facility changes that have to occur within the building. There have, there have been rumors out there, conversations about that, but the bathrooms are ready, the buildings are ready, all those pieces. The, we do have to figure out furniture switches. We have some pretty small furniture in there, so there's going to be some shifting of classroom furniture. We have to talk about how we're going to move our staff, right? It's a very, we just went through this last year with our, our fifth grade staff and all the staff that were moving from, from the older Coakley to the newer Coakley. And that's a trick, so we're going to talk about how to do that, the best way for staff to do that, you know? I think some of the staff mentioned, you know, those, those two or three big boxes that we got from, in the, in the moving process were really good, so we'll, we'll go through that process. Parent communication throughout this entire process, this is why I released the memo the way I did on Friday and Monday. I want people to come in and share what their concerns are, hear from me directly about what, what my considerations are before I actually make any determinations. Kindergarten activities to be held this school year, right? Obviously, kids aren't going to be in kindergarten at new schools until next year, but Dr. Bowyer's working with all the other principals to talk about what we might want to do at the Prescott and at the Callahan and at the Balch and at the Oldham to make sure that the kindergarten step-ups are there and in place. A lot of questions about technology from Mr. Kidd, what we're going to do for reporting, for report cards for kids in the kindergarten when they get there, is it going to look the same as it does now? The library at Willet has a lot of young developmental books, so we're figuring out ways to make sure that the library is stacked up with some, some books, and just so much more, right? And so things will come up, and that team's going to meet bi-weekly, probably starting in a week, and kind of really go through that process. They'll be calling in parents from the organizations, they'll be calling in staff members, and really to try to go through and identify what those needs are and get a good plan going. I am going to have an evening forum to have conversations with families about this on November 17th at 6:30 PM. It's important again, and I'll have more information by then, I am hoping, but that's a conversation, just to have a discussion. What are those concerns, right, about the, about the redistricting process, and what are we looking at? I'm actually going to be meeting with staff separately as we go forward, individually with those staff who may decide maybe to transfer, but I'm going to be at Willet tomorrow, actually, at 3:30 having, 1:55, 1:55, to have a conversation with the Willet staff directly because they're the most impacted building in terms of staffing, and they'll do the same for the other elementary schools as we go forward. Other principals will be doing that. We're talking about kindergarten paraprofessionals. Nothing set in stone here. The anticipation right now is the kindergarten, kindergarten paraprofessionals will move with the classes, although we will hopefully have them kind of loop with first grade too at the same time. So they'll be in the classrooms, at this point anyway, with, for the higher, higher instructional, the instructional times that are more intense, both in first grade and in kindergarten, and they can kind of loop with those kids because they'll know the first graders that are there, hopefully. They're, you know, if we have, if I'm told later on in the budget season that, you know, reductions have to be made and we might not be able to support all the paras, then you'll probably see them just in the kindergarten like they are now. So this is the spreadsheet. Yes, you know, I asked last year when we were going through this process about policy and about creating kind of these swing zones almost, right between the district lines in case there were issues with enrollment numbers. At that time, you guys talked about my authority that was cited here earlier today under JC and JCA, and yes, it does say individual children, but again, I have to make sure that the, the class sizes in each of the, of the buildings, as well as the total number of students, is sufficient to meet the needs of, of all the kids in the school. Now, there are recommendations here that are not recommendations that I'm necessarily going to make, and in fact, I've already run many of the numbers based on some of these recommendations, and they don't work very well, so I just want to share that. So again, memo goes out, you know, I continue to analyze the data as we go, and there will be changes as we go on. So yeah, there was a conversation about Cleveland when I originally drafted this memo. I was looking at the numbers in Cleveland themselves, and I will share the spreadsheet and kind of go through it in a little more detail. The numbers seemed higher than the other schools by quite a bit, and we did not know how many kindergarten students we were going to get. The census data shows 20, 20 or so students in kindergarten census right now at Cleveland. I don't think that's going to hold, that's going to grow. So one of my original thoughts after conversations with the team was if we were to move some of the students from Windsor, which we don't want to do, it is one of the pillars of the study and one of the conversations that I want to have tonight, move some of the students out of Cleveland from the Windsor to a different school, preferably to increase the number of students at Oldham, which has a very low enrollment number, then we could figure out a way to kind of balance that out. There were requests that I was considering to diversify Willet a little bit, and so one of the thought processes, one of the considerations was to take the Oldham, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the Oldham III neighborhood and shift that back and keep it at the Oldham where it is now, and then shift some of those students from Cleveland that live at Windsor to the Willet School to diversify there, which was another pillar of the study, and that would reduce some of the numbers at Cleveland. It would, it would diversify Willet, and then it would increase the numbers at Oldham and to keep some of the kids that are already in Oldham now at Oldham. I'm not sure that I will go that way, and I will share the numbers again in a minute, but that was a consideration. One of my larger concerns that I have, much more so than that, is the capacity that we have at Prescott in this new model, and mostly that is because we have an unreal amount of census data at Prescott of 60 elementary kindergarten students who are currently on the census data, which no study, I think, would show. We haven't had that kind of a number there anywhere for a while, but the capacities are actually still okay, and I'll share with you what those are in just a minute. So there was a consideration of looking at the, at a Callahan neighborhood that is, was currently slated to move to Prescott and to keep it at Callahan. Now, I ran that number afterwards, and that brings Callahan up to about a 94% capacity, so that is not something that I'm doing. I will already take that one off the table and off the board. But I do need to show you my considerations as I'm going along because I think it's really important to be transparent so people know exactly what's going in my mind. I mean, you're watching me make the cake as I, as I make it, rather than just share with you what the final results are. So what I will do here is I will now pull up the tab here. Make this as big as I can. Here, I do have a copy. I got five. And if anybody, there's a couple extra copies if anybody in the audience wants one of these two they can't see.
I have it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we're looking at in each of the schools is not just the number of students, but to ensure that the spaces are available for the specialists to actually run, so they're not mixed up and sharing like they had been in the past. That was one of the things, too. What I'll share with you here is under this capacity section, you're going to see three numbers. You're going to see the capacity based on the numbers as they are projected for next year with what we know, with the kids from grades one, two, three, and four, and with the census data for kindergarten, okay? So the census data is K. Those numbers are not completed yet. That's what we know for census. This puts Balch for next year, for example, at a capacity of 73.86%. Scenario one's projection was 83%. So once we add additional kindergartners, it could get there, it could be close. What I will share with you was the original purpose of this plan, and that's because Balch's capacity was at 100%, right? The idea of making six K-4 elementary, elementary schools was to reduce the overall capacities of the schools. So Balch being at 100%, now being projected at around 74% with the scenario one projection of 83% without all the kindergartners yet accounted for. So that is one of the reasons, so we're pretty close with Balch, and so I don't see any changes there. You would see they currently have 12 sections. In this scenario, they would continue to have 12 sections, 226 students, plus the number of kindergartners that would come in. Callahan, as you can see, there are 27 students right now that we know of in the census. That number is likely to go up for 176 students total. The capacity currently in this model projected is 76.52%. Add the kindergartners that we're going to get, and you'll likely get around the scenario one projection, which was 80%. And if you look at 24, 25, the, the actual capacities there, it was 103% prior to this. So we have done our job there, getting them closer to 80%. If you look at the Cleveland, and again, these numbers seemed very high to me when I was looking at it prior to me doing the capacities. You can see there is only 26 kids in the kindergarten class. That will likely rise, but their capacity actually, after I looked at it, was 70, about 73%. The scenario one projection was 80%, and the overall capacity prior was 88%. So that will be close, I think, when we actually add the kindergarten class, depending on how many we get in January, it will be closer to 80% where we projected. Oldham, as you can see, is one of our lower capacity schools right now under this model at 55.24%. We don't know the number of kindergartners just yet that are going to fall there. The scenario one projection was low in the first place of 71%. That was the anticipated percentage, where it was originally at 87%. The Prescott's capacity is higher than I would like. You can see the 61 students in K. I am not sure what that will look like after January. It could go higher, it could go lower, but you can see their capacity is 87.68%. The scenario one projection was 83%, and they were at 92% higher. So that's the one capacity number that is higher than where we were projecting. And the Willet, as you can see, is only 30 students currently on the census there. That will likely go up. The capacity there under this model is 67%. The scenario one projection was 72%, and it was 89% prior to this. So the capacity numbers are actually close to where we want it to be, and so I'm actually somewhat happy with, with that, those numbers. The idea now is to make sure that the class sizes are all still under 23, as I had discussed with you as one of my goals under scenario one, and in these cases, they are for the most part. You can see Balch has a class of 48 here, and there's going to be a lot of conversations about what do these classes look like, who are the individual kids in these classes when we finalize the sections? So what you will likely see is the identification of at least these sections needed for now as I go through this process. I do not anticipate making any changes to any neighborhood lines whatsoever. I was never actually anticipating changing lines, but choosing certain students within those lines to equalize some of the classes in different spots. In January, I could come back and say, these kindergarten numbers are very different than what we expected, and you could see me changing a section, either increasing a section or decreasing a section, and then the question would be, if we have, if the class sizes are too high or too low, are there any shifts that I would make under my authorization as superintendent to do that? I don't want people to be surprised, especially in the neighborhoods that I reference here, because I also want to keep the neighborhoods as close as I can to the schools that they, they were in prior, or to the lines where they are, so they're not traveling across the district. I don't know that I will have to do that based on these numbers, and I don't plan on making any determinations on those changes until after January when we know the kindergarten And I do have the maps down here as well, so you can see the projected capacities in scenario one. This is the Oldham III neighborhood that we were referring to. You can see there are about eight kids in the kindergarten census there, eight in grade one, two in grade six, sorry, six in grade two, six in grade three, 11 in grade four, and it could be any number of those based on grade levels that I would be considering as we move forward. And then you can see Callahan here. This is Callahan V. This neighborhood that is currently at Callahan would remain there under this possibility. And you can see there are two in kindergarten, that's, actually, there's 12, that should be 12 in kindergarten based on the census, nine in grade one, five in grade two, 13 in grade three, eight in grade four, and I actually shifted them over on a different spreadsheet to the Prescott and brought, to the Callahan, and brought the Callahan up to 97%, so that was not, not a do thing. So my goal today was just to share with you my thought process, how I'm proceeding with next steps, to share with staff where we are in the conversation about transfers, knowing that many of you will have conversations with me based on the number of sections over the course of the next month to identify what if, where you want to move, how you want to move, and try to finalize that, and then to notify kind of families that there are some imperfections in any study, and that there may be some shifts for individual students, and maybe from some of these neighborhoods if we can't equalize sizes. But overall, we are pretty close to where we want to be, and so I'll know more in January, but I will take any questions that you have.
Just before I turn it over to the committee, Dr. Luff, thank you. This is very detailed and I think well thought out, and I'd just like to say, you know, again, for somebody that was a start, sort of a part of this process when it started, can say that I've been here long enough, you know, right? This whole process is born out of the fact that we built a new middle school, and in that middle school, we moved our fifth graders up. So in moving, that created, you know, space across our elementary schools, and sort of that was the entry point into this question and the purpose of the study that, you know, that did this, that was, okay, we're going to have this space, what is the next best step look like? So, you know, I just want to reiterate to community members, this, you know, we, we take this very seriously. I'll leave sort of my personal opinion about it with neighborhood schools and towns, that's a different discussion, but we are, we are where we are, and as a result of sort of the configuration that we did with the middle school, this was the trickle-down effect. So there is going to be movement. We, we have to, to do this, and I think it was well thought out, and, you know, we brought in a group to sort of study and give us some of those points and be sort of a, a third party that is neutral, and, and we can sort of feed in data and say, hey, what about this? Hey, what about this? And this is what this has produced. So I know there are a lot of questions, but I just wanted to make sure that I sort of said that before we turn it over to the committee. So I'll start. Does online have any questions? Because I can't see them.
Not right now.
Okay. Emery?
Not at the moment.
Okay. I can't hear the voices from the sky. Judith or Teresa?
Do you have, I guess my question is, is it an active utility to even draft this up before you have the kindergarten data?
No, this is going to be a work in progress as we go because I have to identify at least the number of sections for the most part that I have in the school. So I will know how many one, two, three, and four, fourth grade sections I need to have, and teachers need to have an idea whether they're going to be shifting, and there's a process there. Parents, for the most part, need to have an idea that I'm not going to make changes to a, a lot of it, right? And so if there are going to be changes, I want to be really focused on those changes at that time to give those parents the most information and the most, as much time as I can to address their needs, because I don't want to be doing the entire thing, say, in January, and then something, I find something else, thought that I didn't know about grades one through, you know, four, and then we have to make even a bigger shift.
It's a great question.
It is.
You don't need to be mean, but it's, you know, it's little numbers, so they make a big difference. I appreciate that you have a forum coming up. I said this before, I think this is going to be an issue where people want a lot of communication with you, with us, and feedback and input, and that's how community works, so I'm hopeful that those processes will go well. Yeah, I mean, it's, redistricting is not easy, and I get it, and I appreciate you doing this. And have you uploaded it on their, the website so everybody can access this?
This is not uploaded on our website, but it is part of the school committee packet agenda that is on the website so people can see this.
All right. Great. Just directing people because it's a very nice thorough review.
I will say, this particular spreadsheet, though, if I change one number, it changes all of the other pieces, too, you know? So it will be changed as time, so it's a working document, it really is.
Yeah, but it just gives people your, your thought process a bit, so I think that's nice to look at.
Trying to choose my words appropriately. Obviously, I have had many questions about this process all along, and I, I still have a lot of questions. Does not make me feel comfortable that things have changed already. Does not make me feel comfortable that things have changed already. I, looking at what you gave us tonight, Mr. Luff, I'm looking at the presentations from, you know, the study before, and there's enough of a difference that if I just look at it from a purely numbers pragmatic, it's a red flag, what's going on? The numbers we had from Sanborn, and David, you may know, because I know you were like really involved in that process, they felt confident about grades one through four, and kindergarten was like a best guess scenario? Is that how they generated those numbers?
Yes, to my recall, I don't know if you're asking Tim, but to my recall, yes.
Well, because you were involved in the beginning, so I didn't know what you remembered.
But also important to know that that was also based on what kindergarten would have been last year, right? Because we moved it a year, too, so.
Yeah.
It's almost two sets of kindergarten numbers that they weren't perfect on, because we moved it a year.
Yeah, it got, it got a little confusing with the data. The numbers you gave us tonight, Superintendent Luff, this, this represents the neighborhoods and the scenario one that we approved.
Previously.
Yes.
Okay. And, yes, the kindergarten numbers have changed, and I know they're still coming in, and I know, like, there's not only going to be twenty-six kindergarteners at Cleveland, like, that's not going to happen. You know, nine years in the seat, that's not going to happen.
Well, I think many of those kids could also be in Windsor, too, and have not hit the census data.
Well, Windsor goes to Prescott.
No, not under this model. Scenario one, they go to, we didn't want to.
But currently.
Currently, they do, but these, these numbers here, these twenty-six, are based on the new Cleveland lines.
Okay.
So all of these numbers are based on the new neighborhoods that you districted.
Right.
Yep.
Just the, the one thing that has, like, quickly run the numbers, which I was asking about a couple meetings ago as well, so for as long as I've known, we've had thirteen kindergarten classes at the Willet. And there's thirteen kindergarten classes with between, like, sixteen and twenty-two kids, depending on the needs of the kids and the configuration. Under this already, if we were going to try to stay within that ratio of kids, we're looking at fourteen to fifteen kindergarteners, kinder classrooms, across the district. And that has been probably my number-one question and point all along, that by taking a cohort of students and spreading them now between six schools instead of five, we were making this harder on us operationally and budgetary-wise. And unfortunately, I was hoping I was wrong, but unfortunately, these numbers seem to say, this is a challenge. Because already, we're looking at potentially needing to add a kindergarten teacher.
So these numbers also have a co-op, two co-op classes at the kindergarten as well. So you see where it says Willet, current eleven, there are actually eleven kindergarten classes at Willet now. And there are two co-op classes that are a mixer, a mixture of some special education students and general education students. So right now, this model requires sixty-eight total general education teachers to cover, I'm sorry, this model, is that right? Yeah, there are, there are currently seventy teachers now in this model, and seventy total sections meeting for all of everything. So there, when I brought you scenario one, I shared that we might need an additional teacher right in the budget.
Yep.
This model, right now, requires no additional teachers, budget-wise, because things spread out differently in the other grade levels as well.
And can I ask, Paul, your concern was, in one of the previous ones that was presented to us, there was a possible need for adding a teacher?
I, I just, I just, I know the will the committee has been to go forward, I'm not trying to change your mind necessarily, I'm trying to make sure we're doing this in the best way as we move forward.
Yep.
It just never made sense to me from a financial number perspective, and if you look back at, like, the 2015 Abrams study and the 2017 feasibility study, all of those studies have said you need to spread your cohort less, not more, and we did it more. And I will play around with these numbers, because that's what I do. I just didn't have time to do it before tonight, but if I'm looking at our current enrollment, I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at our projections, the story is saying to me, we are going to need way more teachers, and we're also going to have more unequal class sizes, which has been my concern from the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not trying to argue, I hear you. I, we're victims of our own experience, and, as I've told the committee before, I came from a model that I think frankly is better, when you do warehouse schools. So we had a pre-KK school, a one-two-three school, a four-five school. I like that model better for a number of different reasons. And, you know, as, as we've said, when we, when the time comes, like, we're not rebuilding six elementary schools. So I hear you, and I think you're right, where you don't want to spread out the cohort, you do, but I would go back to, and again, just my opinion, I'm not, just stating, not necessarily trying to convince you either, it's just like, right, we're, we're at this point where this is what happened when the fifth grade moved, this is what a, you know, and I think that this process was pretty good, that, that we went through, that was vetted, that, you know, it's like, this is sort of the next step, and, you know, we're trying to make the best, you're never going to make everyone happy, and, and that's not an excuse, I understand the emotional attachment, the, all of it, you know, but it's like, you're trying to do the best for everyone, and everyone is not going to get what they want.
Yeah, I guess, just as Mr. Luff, as you continue to analyze, and as there is the, you know, working group, task force, whatever we're calling it, I'm going to continue to ask these questions around the budget and the numbers. It hasn't sat right with me from day one, and I'm still looking for somebody to give me the concrete data and tell me I'm wrong. Like, tell me I'm wrong, give me the numbers and prove it. Separate from that, and related, so are we moving forward after our special, our special education student services audit? Are we moving forward with all the same programs in the buildings? Because it looks like we are, like Task is staying at Callahan, PLC at Cleveland, PACTS at Oldham. We're not shifting any of those, we can concretely say now, even with redistricting, they're staying in these schools?
When we planned the special education programming changes last year, we planned them to fit into the redistricting model.
Okay.
So even the numbers that you see here, for example, we have eleven students that are currently at LMPA that are in our PACTS program. They will be moving to Oldham next year. The following year, any LMPA students that are in PACTS will move to the Willet, and then Oldham the next year, and then Willet the next year. We strategically did that to break that high-knee population, which was growing, out of one school. So those, those models are all still in place, as was discussed with our special education families last year.
What about with Task? Because one of the common themes I've heard over the years is that we have children at the Willet in past years and maybe this year, who really need it to be in a Task program, but we didn't have Task available to kindergarten. But with this shifting, and K going into the Callahan, are we now going to have potentially a higher number of Task kids? And how are we projecting that? Like, we wouldn't know those needs of those kids yet.
I think, just like any other special education needs in kindergarten, unless it's a very severe disability, it's really difficult to determine if a student needs a program at that time, anyway. You know, and we added behavioral interventions for the general education setting on purpose, and for special ed on purpose, so we would have more interventions before they've had to go there. Now, having said that, could there be a student in kindergarten that requires a Task program? Sure. Yeah, but that's not a number that would shy me away from this at all.
Okay, so another question, David.
Yes.
So if I shift more from, like, budget and numbers, and then just to policy and procedure, if we are looking at, I mean, we took a very clear vote on scenario number one. So if anything changes from that vote that was given in that packet, I do think it needs to come back to the school committee. I think, moving forward, there's definitely authority as a superintendent to shift things around and bring recommendations back. But I do repolicy JC and JCA that if the lines and neighborhoods are shifting, that's your recommendation back to us.
Yeah, but I'm not changing the lines. What I'm discussing is certain, certain people in those lines, I might request a change. I'm not asking the school committee to change the lines, I actually think that they're right where they need to be. I would be making individual determinations with families on shifting.
So Windsor Gardens has always been a little bit of a tricky conundrum in the district for years, and the way the previous administration handled it perhaps was not the right way, where it was just every year, the two principals of the school, the Prescott and the Cleveland, would talk about how many kids are coming to first grade, where are they going to go? And I don't think that process ever came to the attention of many school committee members. And I know you do things very differently than the previous administration, but I do feel like if you're making that decision year by year, some type of communication has to come back. I don't, and I don't know, my question, David, I guess for you would be to help us figure out, is that a school committee vote? Or maybe, you know, Joan and Judith on the policy subcommittee, how are you reading the policy?
That is a good question, and I would say I would get back to you on that. Because your question is about, and Joan, I see your hand, you're next, your question is about the past practice of where the principals talked about it, like, we, that should have, like, in some ways should have performed, we should have had some knowledge, or there's some policy procedure with it, that's your question.
Yeah, and if it seems like that's going to happen again, like, right, there's less students at Windsor Gardens, so if it seems like it's going to be a reoccurring conversation, then I think we need to fix what happened in the past.
Okay, I'm not, I will get back to you, it's a great question.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Giblin?
So, for what it's worth, as the policy subcommittee chair, I think I would caution you, Mr. Luff, that, to err on this, I would caution you to err on the side of caution. I, if you are talking about changing, I, I hear what you're saying about the fact that you're talking about individual families, but it amounts to, in some of these scenarios, because we're talking hypotheticals, it does amount to what appears to be a change in the redistricting plan. So I would encourage you to err on the side of caution, and make sure that you're coming to us with those, anything more than literally this student in this house or this apartment is moving here, and their neighbor is not, because of the redistricting plan, I think we're probably going to interpret it very conservatively, what the redistricting plan is. Second, to Teresa's point, I don't actually believe that that needed to come to the committee. Those types of decisions needed to come to the committee, because I think Windsor Gardens was intentionally set up as a fluid district, and I could be wrong, but that the school committee had delegated the authority to the superintendent on an ongoing fashion, which is different than what happened with our vote on the redistricting plan, which is why I'm encouraging Superintendent Luff to err on the side of caution in, in regards to this, in regards to this year. Does that, does that make sense? And I also think that the committee should remand this to the policy committee, so we can check through what, what that might look like, and a recommendation for the full committee around what authority to delegate to Mr. Luff around this, and what we would like to see come back to the full committee, if the committee feels that that's a good decision.
Thank you, Joan.
Joan, I think that's a really good idea, because I think, I think he's walking a fine line, and I think you can play real cute and pretend like it's not a redistricting when everything along the lines is getting changed, but I do think bringing it to the policy subcommittee is a really good idea, we could take a closer look.
Yeah, let us work with Mr. Luff around what flexibility he feels like he needs, and what we feel like we need in return, in regards to redistricting authority, and those types of things, and kind of hash that out. And it may be that we come back with a similar thing of saying, this particular neighborhood at this moment in time, because of the, you know, needs to be designated differently than the consulting firm said, but we just won't know until we have an opportunity to sit down and really kind of hash that out, and hear all the concerns, and we'll bring recommendations back to the committee.
And again, just for the, for the record, I mean, right now, looking at these, outside of Prescott, which is a little high, there don't have to be any changes, you know, so I just want to make that clear to everyone. These will likely be able to stand the way they are without individual decisions. I would just, obviously, if we have some higher-level class sizes, make some shifts. I just wanted those, I just wanted those families now, rather than in January, or in February, or March, or April, when classes get high, to know that those are some of the areas where I might be making individual decisions. That's all I wanted folks to know, so.
Okay. Joan, go ahead.
And I'm just going to say, I greatly appreciate that, and I greatly appreciate the proactiveness of this, because I think what you've done is highlight an area where there's a need for clarification on the policy. You are responsible for managing a fluid district. It would be lovely if, you know, as soon as a student moved out of high school, that a kindergartner was ready, in their same house, in their same address, to move into the school system, and we didn't have to think about that, but that is obviously not the case. So you need some flexibility, our policies may not be providing that, but we still have a responsibility to the community around redistricting. So I appreciate you bringing it up now, because it's, it's nice to be able to think these things through proactively, rather than you coming to us and going, so it's August twenty-seventh, and our plan is blown to hell. Instead, we can kind of, you know, work together on it. So I appreciate it. This is definitely not a reprimand, this is an appreciation.
Thank you. Just watching time, I want to make sure, like, last comments, so do we have any last comments from people online? Emery or Joan?
Hearing none from the voices above.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes, absolutely.
I know we talked before about the possibility of needing to look at a flexible district, but we didn't vote on that, right?
No, I was told that I had the authority for individual.
Students.
Yeah, students, yes.
Students, but not to say this community is constantly going back and forth.
Correct.
That I think we would have to vote on. I know, Joan, you said you're going to talk about a policy, but I think if, if the committee takes a vote that this neighborhood is a flexible district, then it is your authority year by year to make that decision.
Hundred percent, I'm not asking for that. That's something that I mentioned last year, and then you pointed me to the policy where I can make decisions about individual students. I'm not asking for that authority. I don't think, I don't think it's necessary in this case.
Okay.
And so, no, I would, I would, if I had to, do the individual conversations, and I will update you when I do those, because I think as part of the redistricting plan itself, I think it's nice to know if I had to make any individual changes based on what the, what the outcome was. I don't mind sharing that with you. I mean, I, I wouldn't want to have to share with you every single individual decision we make for every single student, but, you know, but in this particular case, as it, as it relates to how the plan was implemented and how it's going, I think it's important, I can at least share with you that, yeah, you know, there were three students in, you know, grades one and four and fi, and three that I had to shift to facilitate where the plan is, and I don't know that I'll have to yet. I just, I just don't know that I will, but I can.
Okay. Judith, do you?
Oh, no, no, any worries. When would we talk about this again, David?
We can talk about it when we, I mean, I think it would probably be pertinent sometime at the end of January, or beginning of February, with data, but we will talk about the long-term agenda, so I think that, like, we can talk about that then. Okay, just again, for time, thank you, folks. This conversation is ongoing, and we appreciate the feedback and the process, and this is certainly not the last we'll see of this, this school year. So thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and look, long-term agenda, right there. Yes, okay, so moving into the business portion of the meeting, if people want to open and take a look at the long-term agenda, obviously, as always, this is a working dock, and because it is agenda, you know, we can talk offline, but I think it's a wonderful thing that sort of keeps us focused and going. You know, to your question, Teresa, if you're okay with this, to Dr. Luff, do you think, what meeting do you think would be better for doing some redistricting conversation again? End of January?
I, I do think the January fourteenth or January twenty-eighth budget meetings would be better.
Okay.
Yeah. We should, I won't have much more information for you on the final numbers for kindergarten until then.
Okay.
And I don't anticipate any changes until that time at all. I'll be working with teachers on the class sections that I know, and transfers that I can do, and then we'll be working on some of the smaller items with the principals, but there won't be any updates on any major changes to this at all until.
Okay. Teresa?
Yeah, I just see this very similar to start times, and we talked about it monthly as we were making it happen. I don't feel comfortable not talking about it again until January, February.
Okay.
There's a lot of moving pieces here, even if it's just an update.
How about Joan and I update the policy authority in December, and then we update based on the new information for the kindergarten in January?
That, or we could ask Dr. Luff to, in his.
I can give you a brief update on December seventeenth.
Okay.
Very brief update on what we've done. Transfers were made so far, not, I could have much more information on you for anything else, but I can at least give you that process, and not a problem.
Okay.
At the forum on the seventeenth, are you collecting any survey or? The forum on the 17th, are you collecting any survey or feedback, or is it just in-person discussion?
It's just an in-person discussion and thoughts.
Okay.
I just want to hear from families.
Okay, I'm arbitrarily choosing January 28th as well. And I spelled it wrong.
We should have the kindergarten registration done by then, so that'll be good.
Just, yes, with kindergarten registration. So, those are on, but just do take a look at the next three. So December 3rd, December 17th. I know in an email, Teresa, you had said and asked about Student Advisory Council that's on for the 3rd.
Yep.
Those online, looking at the next two December meetings, is there anything else that jumps out at you? Hearing silence from...
No.
Okay, hearing silence from the voices above. I think we're okay.
No.
What is the AP update? Like, what are we actually getting, like, the number of students enrolled? Or an update on, like, the exams in the spring? What are we covering?
I haven't talked to Cindy about that yet. Dr. Galligan did one for you last year. At your request, I think it'll be something similar to what was done last year.
Okay.
My idea for now.
Okay. David, can we talk a little bit more about SAC, just in general?
Yeah, if you'd like.
I had sent on email to all of you after I met with our Student Advisory Council on the 28th. So as you already said, David, they're gonna come for their first presentation to us in December. But Dr. Galligan was hoping that we could plan out the year, so, you know, makes his work and the students' work a little easier if they know when they're coming. And then we should meet as a committee with them in January. You know, ideally, it's all of us. I know that's really hard with our jobs and commitments. Preferably, it should be more than just me. I would love it if, you know, one or two other people could, could meet with them. They prefer to meet either on a Tuesday or Thursday during WIN, which is from 10:22 to 11:19. And the two dates that work for the students and work for Dr. Galligan that I put in my email were January 6th or the 8th. So I know Dr. Galligan wants to schedule that and book a room and have the students, so to the rest of my committee, can anyone else join me on either one of those days?
I can't speak to that first part just because I'm in school at that time.
Yeah.
But I would say, could you communicate to Dr. Galligan to come when they present maybe suggestions they have of, you know, what would be better for the, like, if it was a... Like, January, March, May, or...
Like, when they come here?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's already in my email. We talked about that last meeting. So if you were sent on December 3rd, then we were looking at having them come in February.
Okay.
And then April. Now, the tricky thing with this year's calendar is that there's only one February and one April meeting.
Yeah.
And then either in May or early June. Graduation this year is May 31st, so if we do June, we just want to keep in mind that two of our SAC students will have graduated. But that, that's what Dr. Galligan was looking at, like, February, April, and then for Dave, you and Tim to figure out, you know, end of May or early June.
So April 8th, you want them on there?
But if the rest of you want to look at your calendars, and then, since we are allowed to talk about scheduling offline, just let me know either January 6th or 8th, because I know they want it to...
I can never do a Tuesday, but...
Okay.
If it's Thursday, we can definitely block it off.
Okay, so then Joan, Anne-Marie, if either one of you want to let me know later if you could do Thursday, January 8th during WIN.
Yeah, I have a hard time with the Tuesday as well.
I will likely, I'm just gonna check my travel schedule. And as you know, I meant to make it to the last one, but then I felt ill that day, and I did not want to give it to anybody else. I apologize for not making it and appreciate that you could, you could still go, Teresa.
Yeah, things happen, I get it.
Okay. So if there is no more on that, as always, email, we can talk about that offline. Oh, I was just gonna copy and paste.
Oh.
So I'll go do that. So anything else? No? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Moving along. Update from the Middle School Building Committee. So I'll give the brief update, and then I actually have a couple of questions for you guys in public to ask. So we met on October 20th. Most of our conversation, we did the usual business item stuff, but most of the conversation was around the walking path, and we got stuck a little bit, and there's actually an email that I will update you on at a different time, but just, you know, as we go to do the walking path and sort of what the prices were, not in October, but I think it was at the end of September, we had chosen to take out one piece, I think, the guardrail. So there's the road that goes in back of the school that's above the fields. So there is now a wooden guardrail up there, but sort of the discussion is around sort of the gentle slope that goes down onto the field and where we're gonna put paths. We've been sort of going back and getting, back and forth and getting prices and asking, like, who's doing the work, how are we doing this? It was interesting because we were sort of stuck on some of those things, and there's a softball field that's there that has a backstop that is not in great shape. But we've sort of talked about, I think, that it's more of a rec, not necessarily youth sports, but rec sports that use it. So there was conversations about how to sort of get that funded. There was an email that Tim and I got that we will share with you guys about, I think the town's trying to get some community preservation funds to fund that, because it came back at like $90,000. So, you know, when you replace things after like 20 years, they're that expensive. So supposedly, when we go back in November, we'll like actually have a vote and actually like have a conclusion to this. There were two things that I had asked, and I'm looking for direction from the committee on this, but, you know, I think that this ties into our budget stuff, and I would ask you guys to weigh in on this and what you want. But I, I had asked specifically to the committee, the Middle School Building Committee, because we're going to have such a a good-sized surplus that is left. Sort of what are the policies, procedures, and laws that govern that? And what are ways we want to maybe advocate? And I know that, like, you know, the school is a bond, it's funded, or, you know, it's voted on by town meeting, so ultimately, it is, you know, like, the authority of town meeting, but that money is to build a school. So I think that that sort of gives us more sort of influence, and we should have a say and a seat at the table at that. So looking for clarification, been asking about that. I also had asked Alan sort of specifically to lay out what the next year is going to look like. What is the wind-down process where our project manager will be vacating the site as to, like, I think, mean of a word? But they sort of shut down and will remove operations on-site in December. You know, but what does that process look like? There's obviously a 10-month follow-up where they come and do sort of a, an on-site visit again, and that's all, all part of the process. But just sort of how, have Alan and the Middle School Building Committee lay out what that looks like, but then also, you know, the committee itself and sort of where we begin to off-ramp and that stuff comes from. Did they finish the turf field as you showed us pictures?
Yeah, it looks great right now.
Turf field is also done, which is wonderful. Go up, take a drive, take a look. I was driving by there yesterday, they're finishing the entrance. I believe it would be called the south entrance, because you're heading to Walpole, right? Top of the hill? Maybe I got that right?
Yes.
So there's still some work there, but those were sort of the, the three big things. Tim, did I miss anything?
No, so that was pretty much it.
Okay. Questions, comments, and concerns from the committee?
We meet again Monday, right?
Yes. And we meet again Monday, November 10th, 4:30 PM, at the Coakley Middle School. Excellent. If there are no questions, comments, or concerns, we will move right into budget, and I will turn it over to Teresa and Anne-Marie for a budget subcommittee update.
Yeah, so we last met on October 29th. The majority of what we talked about, Mr. Mannion will be taking us through. But we finalized some information for the Finance Commission. Superintendent Luff, Mr. Mannion, Anne-Marie, and I will be going to the FinCom on November 20th to do our quarter one report and, like we do in past years. So we finalized the material for that. We finalized the information for town meeting next week on November 13th. And then Sean and Tim did an info session, I believe, on Monday. I will let Anne-Marie talk about BBC, because I think unfortunately that process has stalled a little bit again. But what we went through in detail, and Sean will take us through tonight, is looking at some potential FY26 federal funding deficits, looking at our carry-forward income records history, a staffing reconciliation. And then what we will also talk about tonight with Mr. Luff is starting to determine what our budget priorities are for the next fiscal year. But Anne-Marie, did you want to say anything about BBC? I think you may have the more up-to-date information on that.
Sure. Yeah, so as, you know, we were trying to get the BBC together. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I have a really bad echo earlier, so I just wanted to make sure. You know, we were trying to get BBC together earlier rather than later, so at least we could plan out the, at least get a kickoff meeting so we could plan out the rest of the, the meetings throughout the year. We know that we usually get started somewhere much later in the budget process. With everything that's coming up, we want to make sure that we are ahead of it and meeting as soon as we can. I sent out an initial poll. We had a date set for last Wednesday, and unfortunately, just due to an administrative miscommunication, we did not get that posted in time. So we were not able to hold the meeting because we would have been out of compliance with the meeting law, and that is the last thing we want, was something this high-profile. So the meeting did not happen last Wednesday, so I did send out another poll. So to date, I have not had many responses. So I was traveling today and had actually spoken to Mr. Luff and let him know that I'm gonna have to pick this one of the dates that looks the best, based on the responders, and we're gonna try to get a meeting in before the town meeting next week. We do have much more administrative communication, and that, that miscommunication will not happen again. The town manager's office has been in touch and let us, and give, you know, let us know who can handle that, and it will get done timely, and we'll be all set. So hopefully, once that date is picked, people will be able to make it, and we can get a meeting in before town meeting.
Excellent. I will say, thank you for that. I did, I saw the email that you had sent, Anne-Marie, and I did sort of nudge, not that I don't trust you, but just as, as chair, had sort of nudged the other groups, and I had reached out to the select board as well and just said, "Hey, on behalf of the school committee, we'd like to get this process going." So, you know, I appreciate your work, you know, things happen, not a big deal that it fell through, but I know that, you know, and if our...
Yeah, unfortunately, we were able, I mean, we were mostly all available, and it just, you know, that was, that's just something, unfortunately, with the way that town bodies work and elected bodies, we just, we just couldn't do it without having that 48-hour posting.
Yeah, no, and we understand that. And just, you know, if our fellow committees are watching, you know, just that we ask that you help us out and get going on this, so.
Yeah, and David, I realize, so, like, we're talking about BBC, and everybody may know, but that's the Budget Balancing Committee, and it is in our town bylaws. And it is two members of the school committee, two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the Finance Commission, and then our superintendent, our Assistant Director, or Superintendent of Finance, and then those equal parts on the town as well. And our job is to balance the budget, and we are supposed to be working on next year's budget cycle and have been trying to get a head start on that for quite some time. The last thing for the Budget Subcommittee, we meet again on December 10th. Superintendent Luff is working with the administration on building the preliminary budget, and it'll be on December 10th that he will bring the FY27 preliminary budget to the Subcommittee, and then we will bring it to the full school committee the last meeting in December.
Great.
I would just say that the, I think the town meeting informational session went really well the other day. It is online on the town website, so you can see the video of our request anyway, and the other town requests to increase the amount of the Special Education Reserve Fund warrant article. So there's great questions that night. Looking forward to town meeting on the 13th.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm derelicting my duties here, because I clicked out of the wrong tab. Okay, so that was budget Subcommittee update, as well as BBC. We're good with that, can move on to the next. Okay. Mr. Mannion, update on the potential federal funding deficits.
Thank you. So this memo is an update to the committee on federal funding. We're watching very closely information on federal funding. We do receive about $2.5 million in federal grants that offset a lot of various costs for the school district. We also receive, the town receives federal Medicaid money. We've been watching it closely. Right now, as far as federal grants go, we've been informed that all of the FY26 federal grants, what we found out is that FY26 federal grants are approved in the FY25 federal budget, and that has already been passed. The state has already been sent the funds from the federal government, and we've already written these grants, and we've already gotten confirmed amounts. So these are the title grants, which we reported on in our quarter one report. A lot of, those are the larger grants that we receive, including also the Special Education IDEA grant. Those are all awarded, and we're pretty confident on those. We, this memo is talking about FY26 funding. We will, when we get to budget, need to talk about FY27, which would be the 26 federal government budget. There's some news out there that there could be some potential reductions in Title I, Title II, and Title IV, but that will all be for next year's budget. So we're not really reporting on that right now. We're also closely monitoring the government shutdown, as everybody is. Right now, one of the main things that we're looking at is our child nutrition program, so that's school lunch. We get federal reimbursements. We know, at the time of this memo, it was October 24th. We know that at this point, we have received the September federal reimbursements to our school lunch program. And we have a little bit more updated information in this memo that the federal reimbursements for school lunch have been sort of committed through at least the end of November. When we look at our school nutrition revolving fund, we do have a very positive balance of about over $1.5 million. The average operating costs for the school lunch program are $250,000. So we believe that if this shutdown continued, we would still be able to operate school lunch. No reductions to school lunch, at least for six months, without any issues due to delays in federal funding. And once the federal government opened back up, we would receive any back reimbursement. So we feel pretty good that we, we can last up to, closer to the end of the school year on, on school nutrition. I've seen even some information from Chartwells, which is our vendor, and they've been watching it very closely, and they're, they're giving us the same information that our school nutrition program should be pretty, pretty solid for now, given the, given the shutdown.
It's actually really, I think, solid news, right? We have this, we have this account that we know we're trying to spend down on school nutrition items. It has to be spent on school nutrition. And now we have this significant issue with the federal government. We are, we are possibly not going to have those funds, and we have this money to be able to support our students, both breakfast and lunch throughout the remainder of the year. So it's a really, I think something that other schools might not have, so it's, it's fortunate that we could use that if we need to.
We're, we're in a good position financially for that, to weather this as long as it goes on. Lastly, we're watching the school-based Medicaid program. This is Mass Health, so this is a federal reimbursement for Medicaid services. We're not aware of any reductions to this program at the moment, and we did receive an increase in federal Medicaid. We've been really working diligently to claim more services. We've been talking about related services, OTPT, speech, things like that. So we actually increased the revenue by over $150,000 last year. With that additional revenue and with the warrant article that the town voted in the spring for $300,000, we have three staff that are being paid off the warrant article. We believe we should be able to weather anything that would happen this year, and again, we haven't heard anything this year. So that's what this memo is about, is FY26. We, we should be solid. We shouldn't have any reductions in the staff or anything like that. And we'll just have to look to whatever information we see for next year.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the committee? Joan?
I, I just want to say thank you for putting that analysis together after the last meeting. It is great to hear that, I mean, it's great to hear that we have six months worth of funding, but I'm even, I'm happier that, I'm happy about all of that. Every, everything you said makes me happy, Sean, so thank you. Thank you for putting that analysis together.
No problem. It's a good thing to hear from the... It's a good thing to hear from the financing.
David, can I ask you a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Sean, Tim, I didn't have this question when we last met because it didn't happen, but I just saw in the news that because of the shutdown, Head Start in Norwood has been closed. So what does that mean in terms of the lease that we have?
So we did have a question about that, and I have not talked to Head Start yet. We're going to work with them. I mean, it's obviously a tough, tough time for them.
Yeah.
I, I don't know the answer to that. I'll work with Mr. Mizuko. Obviously, the lease is through us, the School Committee, and then, but I have not addressed that yet.
Okay. And I don't mean to be heartless, like, I feel really bad that Head Start was shut down, but just like, I don't have authority over that in the seat. I only have the ability to ask that question about the lease. But I think at one point, we did have some students who were both in Head Start and in our preschool. Do we currently have any families that were in our preschool and in Head Start?
I do not know the answer to that question. I can, I can find that out.
Okay. Just wondering if some of our families need extra support or anything that we should be looking at right now.
Did I hear it again? Did I make that up?
Did you?
Okay. Other questions?
Joan was just letting us switching.
What?
Devices. Joan was just letting us know she was switching devices.
Oh, okay. All righty. If there is nothing else from that update, we will move on to the next, so the Mr. Manion Show continues.
Okay, so this was a memo requested by the Budget Subcommittee based on our Quarter One report. It's very specific information about carry forward encumbrances. So let me give you a little bit of context. School districts are able to carry forward encumbrances at the end of a fiscal year. So our fiscal year is July through June, and an encumbrance is sort of a contract to pay for something, but you may not have received it yet. That's how our finances work in municipal accounting. So at the end of the year, if we've encumbered money, we may have spent parts of our budget to order supplies or services or something, but those goods or services have not been received yet, mostly with like, school supplies at the end of the year, equipment could be, could be something. We carry forward those encumbrances, so we call that money sort of spent, and we move it into the next year. And those carry forward funds, they exist for the next fiscal year, even though they're from the prior fiscal year. And by the end of that next fiscal year, it may be that some of those supplies, equipment, or things were never received, and we liquidate those encumbrances, and we send back to the town some of those funds. So when you look at that, you're kind of looking at what you carried forward encumbrances in that first beginning of the next fiscal year, and then you're comparing it to what we finally spent of that carry forward at the end of that next fiscal year. So you can see a little bit of a history here. There's a history from FY25 to up to FY25. The first column, you can see the encumbrances brought forward. You can see what was spent of those encumbrances, and you can see if any of those encumbrances were still left at the end of the year. So you'll see in the very first year is a little different than the future years. So in FY22, we carried over $534,000 in encumbrances to FY23. We spent by the end of that next fiscal year, by the end of FY23, $221,000, and we still encumbered at the end of the year, $270,000. So we returned to the town, which goes to the town's free cash, thirty, only $37,000 that year. But what was unique that first year was we, we carried forward the encumbrances again. So we sort of carried forward the encumbrances to a third year. So when you look at FY23 going into FY24, the encumbrances carried forward were close to 1.1 million, because that includes the 270,000 encumbrances that were really from two years prior. And that coincides with when the new Director of Finance started at the town. And the most common practice, the preferred practice, is that those encumbrances are liquidated after one year. You don't carry them forward more than one year. So you can see that in the next two years, there's zero encumbrances at the end. So in that, in that '23 to '24 year, we spent $722,000, and we actually returned to the town. When you look at the end of that carry forward year, $370,000 to the town. Then you can see in FY24, carried forward to '25, $234,000, $235,000 in encumbrances. We spent $162,000, and we returned $72,000 at the end of that year. And you can see here in the current year, very consistent with last year, we only carried forward $233,000. We don't know how it's going to end up because we haven't looked at the whole year. We're carrying forward less. That's a push from our Department of Ed and also from the town to try not to carry forward more than you believe you need for these supplies and equipment that you're ending. In fact, the DESE is pushing us to even liquidate these encumbrances by December. And also, you can see the town is really keeping to the common practice of these only last one year. So it's, it's a unique thing. I hope I didn't explain it too confusing, because when we report on our Quarter Four, you're hearing about it kind of right after we carried it forward, like in, let's say, August, September, but you really don't see the full effect of all of that until the really following June, and you've closed the next fiscal year. So I think Budget Subcommittee wasn't aware of some of these balances, and I think it's important to know that basically over that period, the school budget has returned close to $500,000 to the town.
That's great.
Yeah.
Question, are you finished?
That's it, that's it.
Okay. Questions, comments from the committee? I want to start online. Hearing none.
Done.
Those present in person?
No, no questions.
No, just Anne Marie and I thought it was important that the full committee, you know, understands us and want to be really transparent, you know, with the town, that our budget process isn't just the development of it, but as a school committee, we monitor it all year long. And as Mr. Manion said, we have in the last three fiscal cycles returned almost half a million dollars to the town that then becomes free cash. So perhaps people can keep that in mind in eight days from now, when we're debating free cash, and just remember where some of that free cash came from, and who's being very responsible with it.
Yeah. Thank you. That was a nice little enlightening piece of data there. If there's nothing else on that, we will move to the discussion of staffing reconciliation. So, Mr. Manion, you continue.
Let me just quickly start with my memo, and then I'll have you. So I attached in your, in this memo, a sheet that shows the staffing reconciliation really focused on FY26, right? When we do these staffing reconciliations, we want you to know where we, what we budgeted for this year, and where we are now as far as staffing goes. We have some work to do on historical staffing reconciliations that we're going to really dig into, that we'll bring up during the budget process, I'm sure, and different town meetings. But Mr. Manion will kind of talk about the changes this year, and just know a lot of changes have been made because we have shifted staff out of, into our grants or out of our grants into the town funds because we wanted to maximize things like our Mass Health reimbursement and different things like that. But I will let, I will also note that as we did any of those things, we ensured that our town partners were not impacted by any benefit packages, so we're tracking that as well. And I will leave it to Sean from here.
Thank you. So this is a reconciliation of staff for FY26. This chart shows, this is something that we showed last year around this time. We've also shown it in town meeting, and it's also in our budget book. Our new budget book has an FTE section. So there's various categories. It explains at the bottom what each category is. They roughly align with our DESE categories. This is the operating budget, so this is not the grants and the revolvings. Those are shown below the line. This is the operating budget. We're showing FY24 actual, FY25 actual, FY26 original budget as it was voted, the adjusted '26 budget, and then the just, the final FY26. At the end, I'm happy to report, we're basically on plan with our staffing, with some shifts, as Dr. Love mentioned. So when you look at FY, going from FY25 to FY26, the original budget for FY26 went from 570.7 FTEs in '25 to 577.3 FTEs in '26. It was an increase of 6.6 FTEs. That was the budget that we voted. We, we went through the whole tiny, you know, all the details that went into that increase of 6.6 FTEs, a lot of which had to do with opening a new middle school. When we compare, so shortly after the budget was passed, obviously, there's a lot of shifting needs in a school district over the summer, and we did have some adjustments that were made that were all cost neutral. You can see that there's an adjusted budget that's a decrease of 1.3 FTEs from the original budget, some things that happened. We transferred some part-time nursing positions to a full-time position, small savings in FTE at LMPA. Some para positions were moved around. That was all cost neutral. We moved some para FTEs to add a .6 adjustment counselor at the middle school, so that decreases the FTEs because it took more para positions to create an adjustment counselor, which is a more higher-paid position. There was a small grant change, some other small changes, and that's basically the decrease of 1.3, so we went from 577.3 down to 576. And then when we look at where we are now, the largest change is shown in the notes column, so we talked about this in Quarter One when we did a grants update, but we've been moving staff from the sped IDEA grant that do this Medicaid claiming, so OTPTs. We moved four of those positions from the grant to the operating budget. You can't double-dip with federal funds, so you can't have somebody being paid by federal funds and then try to claim their work with federal funds. So we can't have these staff that were going to claim Medicaid funding paid by a federal grant fund. So we moved the OTPT staff to the operating budget, four of them, and to make that cost neutral on the grant, we moved nine para positions to the grant. So net savings to the district operating budget was five, a reduction of five positions, and we found that there was basically another position that was under where we had budgeted that we do not expect to need. In FY26, there are vacancies included for staffing positions that we do plan on filling or that at least we're going to hold until the budgeting process. So there are some vacancies, but we're pretty fully hired and pretty fully on plan, which is a good thing to know when you're, when you're coming through the first quarter. And the only other thing to note below the line in '25, it shows, we do have sped drivers and monitors. Those are hourly positions, at least 73. Also not shown here is our school nutrition staff, which is, I think, around 35 positions there. We don't report those as FTEs, and they're paid by revolving funds. We also have about 40 FTEs that are on grants, which includes those paras. There's about 23 pairs on the IDEA grant. There's some other grants that have some FTEs. There's some revolving funds, like the preschool revolving fund, that have some FTEs on it, as well as the transportation revolving fund. And that's it.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the committee? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the next thing, but Mr. Manion, thank you for your three updates and your information there. Dr. Love, I will turn it over to you before we open up the budget priorities discussion.
Yeah, so as we create the budgets for FY27, you know, I'll be meeting with every cost center manager, Mr. Manion, Dr. Migos, over the course of the next three or four weeks, and I'll be asking them very specific questions. You know, what are those things that you think need to be improved to make us a better school district? And those are always important questions, whether or not you have the funding, additional funding to do that or not, because there are ways we can shift, and we can do different things to make, make those things happen. We'll also be asking what the level service budget is. So what are those things that we need to ensure that we're providing the same type of service that we're providing to our kids now, right? Because that's really important to have that same thing. And that's how they're going to build their budget. They're also going to provide me with things they could possibly reduce, right? So we have a relatively new administration. We have many newer principles, and there were many practices in place in the district for years where we might be spending what we don't need to be spending. So to really look back at those things and have an understanding of what they are, and to come with us with some ideas for, for possible reductions. When I come to you, obviously, with the preliminary budget, it's going to be with those things in mind. Here's the level service budget, right? Here's some of the things that were requested for improvement, and some of the ways that we might be able to get there, and then here are some of the things that I might be considering in reductions that you can consider as a, as a whole school committee when we go forward. Tonight, I was kind of hoping we could have that same conversation with you in terms of a budget priority discussion. And you might decide, say, Tim, I want to do it totally different. Let's just talk about what we want, what we don't want, but I thought it was a good model at least to start with. And so my idea would be to have that conversation with, with each of you tonight, just to kind of let me know what your priorities are in terms of improvements, and what things that you think may or may not be necessary. And you don't have to go very much in detail and depth, and I'd appreciate if we weren't talking about specific staff and all that kind of stuff, you know? But just in general, kind of, general thoughts.
10,000 feet versus in the seat, in the auditorium, if you will.
Yeah.
We use the auditorium. To the committee, who would like to start?
I'm just going to open, stop sharing my screen.
So actually, I'm, I'm going to interrupt all of you. Before we start, just reading this, really just a discussion around, you know, priorities. It is listed as a vote, but it seems like, you know, unless I, it's to the will of the committee if you want to vote something or put something forward. I think what Dr. Love was looking for was more just, you know, sort of guidelines, thoughts as we do that. So that's that clarification. Who would like to start?
I can start. How is the special ed audit going to be considered in any of their recommendations?
Well, I think, you know, you heard a lot about the special ed audit last time around.
Yep.
And a lot of those things are already budgeted for this fiscal year, and that, to me, would be level service to continue those things into next fiscal year. So you will see Ms. Davie come to me after working with her staff, having conversations with CPAC on what kind of improvements might be needed to improve those pieces. So that will come through this student service side of things, and you will get a very specific update from student services on that cost center as one of the budget presentations in February, I think. So you'll see that there.
Anne Marie or Joan online?
No one wants to start.
I mean, I'll, I'll start. It is really important to me that we do not continue to decimate general education by 1,000 paper cuts. So I've said before, I said this last year, and I'm going to say it again, and I know that this is not popular. However, the role of a school system is primarily to academically prepare our children to go out into the world. If we're talking about massive budget cuts, I want academics, especially general education academics, kept at the forefront. I recognize that this sucks for athletics and art, but I can't see us cutting academic teachers and programs and not taking a hard look at things like athletics. With the level of budget cuts that we are potentially looking at, we have to go back to the core functions of what our school is. And the core function is to academically prepare our students to go forth in the world. So there you go. That's a nice 10,000-foot overview, so that's a whole lot of something that doesn't give you a whole lot of direction.
No, it does.
Thank you. I mean, I would echo, you know, we know sort of this is coming, and this is not unique to us. I was watching the news the other day, and I think it's Whitman Hansen has like a one and a half million dollar shortfall, so like, it's, it's coming, folks. I would recommend, you know, and I know in some of our conversations, Dr. Love, I've said this, that I think technology is a, having experienced it the past five years, I, I think it's in some cases, and I think it's doing more harm than good. So I would look, I would recommend, if we needed to, that we get rid of one-to-one pre-K to eight. I think that you keep assistive technology for special ed and for those things, you know, if it got to that, and you go from there, because I think that's a huge cost. The upkeep is a huge cost. The managing of those things is a huge cost, and it doesn't, I think that although well-intentioned and maybe advantageous of some companies, you know, during a pandemic, I don't, me as a professional educator have not seen the long-term benefits of, of one-to-one as it was promised. promised back in 1998 when I was an elementary school. Others?
I will tell you some of the things I've said in other conversations. The one I think we have to take the hardest look at is transportation. I think that I look back at when my oldest was enrolled in school and the basically like tough crap I was told when I went to register for buses and things like that, like, you're too far away, get her here. You know, or you're not too, you know, you're not far enough away, but you're, you know, .1 miles, and I think we've gotten soft. And I, that's going to have some ruffled feathers, because I certainly know, I'm a working parent myself, like, and it's, you know, everyone has a heart attack thinking about trying to get their kids to school and home from school with, you know, bus transportation. But I just think it is something we really need to look at what we're doing, how we're doing it. Obviously, this is completely besides our legal obligations to transport, you know, children with special education transportation, not, obviously not suggesting that in any way, shape, or form. But I think we need to look at it and just what's feasible. Many parents don't know that we're not legally obligated to transport kids after grade six. It's actually not even required to have buses for seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. So I'm not suggesting that off the bat, but I just think there's something we need to look at. And if that was a, you know, if we're getting into the nitty-gritty and we're having really hard conversations, that has to be something we talk about.
Yes.
I think although we're focused on the next fiscal year, we also know the year after is going to be even harder.
Mm-hmm.
So I think as we look at this next year, and although I think there's probably ways we can pull a lot of things off, we have to be responsible in what is sustainable beyond next year and end plan for that. Having been in the seat before when we had to make some really hard decisions and go for an override and make two budgets, one of if the budget, the override did not pass, and one if the override did, I do not want to live through that again. And I know all the things we talked about back in 2017 that are probably going to come back up, and Joan and Anne Marie are mentioning some of them. And I just want to say to the community that none of us want these things on the table. None of us want to even talk about it. None of us want to have to deliberate it or vote on it, but we have to. We have to say, these are all the things in our operating budget. These are all the things in our revolving funds. These are all the things that are grant-funded. And, you know, to Superintendent Luff's point, what is level services? Can we even afford level services? Level services and level funded are not obese, very often not the same thing. What are things that we would like to improve upon? And then what are things that we're going to still do, but do in a different way? And I know, Mr. Luff, that you have taken that perspective already. Dr. Munoz, I know you took that perspective. I know we threw you in the hot seat two years ago and really challenged you, but I think we do have to take a step back and look at how we do things, still do them, but maybe the how changes. I think we have to really look at our why. I would encourage us to come back to things that this district has done really well and invested in over the last decade. You know, we have the portrait of the graduate. Do we still mean that that is what we want for our students? And if so, if all five Cs and all of the As, four As are what we are investing in, then that needs to be reflected in our budget. And if it's not reflected in our budget, then we better stop saying that we're a district that does five As, four Cs, and wanting. I think we need to look at our school improvement plans the past couple of years and even the ones that we currently approve. I've said this in meetings before, but so much of what we have approved in school improvement plans has been funded through grants. If those grants go away, on top of our town having some revenue problems, on top of our state having revenue problems, a whole lot can fall out at the same time. And we've invested. We've invested in our AP courses. We've invested in our business pathways. I don't want to see those things go away. There was a time that we were not NEAS accredited. We are NEAS accredited for a reason. I think we need to protect that. I don't know how we do this, but I think we need to talk to students who have graduated in the past couple of years. And part of the reason I was asking about what are we going to get with the AP report is because something I really wonder is, once they leave here, we've had some students do really, really well in AP classes and exams, but what did that actually turn into? What did that translate into? How many colleges are getting them credit? How many kids got to graduate a little bit earlier, save money? Like, what is the real world on the other end of the investment that we're making? David, to your point about technology, I wasn't going to bring it up, but I have two concerns with technology that I would just like us to look at. From a child developmental perspective, I do worry, I have worried. I've asked in meetings before about, are we hurting child development in our elementary school with the screens? Are they writing enough? Are they using their fine motor skills? Are they playing? I would really like us to look at that. And then on the other end, now being a parent of a kid in college, there are some things that we've done really, really well technology-wise, and then there are some things that I'm realizing colleges don't necessarily like that you did in public school. We can talk about that offline, Mr. Luff, but I do think the question of how are we teaching? How are we using our tools? Now is the time to look at it.
Yeah. Thank you. Joan, you raised your hand.
We did. I just want to say that what I, I hear what everybody's saying. We have concerns about many things. I don't want us to go, it's the, I guess I'm just repeating myself. What got us into so much trouble before was trying to pinch a little bit of a corner off of everything. And when you do that for 10 years in a row, you're, you're basically, you know, there's no more fat to pinch. You're, you know, you're pinching bones. And so I guess I agree with Teresa by saying, when we do this, we are going to, this is a soul-searching moment. We're going to need to talk about, we're going to need to match what we want, our aspirations, with what we can afford at the town and make sure that we're clear about that and not try to sugarcoat it, because, you know, bumping kindergarten classes up to 32 people and having, you know, and having an amazing, I don't know, like, basket-weaving class or something like that, it's just not going to, it's just not going to work. So I do think we have to look at everything, and I just want to say, like, can we just not do deaths by 1,000 paper cuts? I'm repeating myself and rambling. I'm going to stop now. Sorry.
We hear you. Thank you. Anything else?
My budget priority is teachers and staff, and it will always be that. We invest in them through grants, through training. We don't want them to leave. When you start talking about cuts, they will leave in droves. It will be the good ones. Morale goes down. It decimates the schools. I've seen it. I don't want it to happen here. My priority is the staff, the teachers. And I will do anything to make sure that we can keep them.
Yes.
Totally hear you. I'm not refuting that at all. But what is so tricky and what I need the community to understand is that, like, 85% of our budget is our staff. We could potentially be looking at $7 million. And having been through this experience before, it's staff. And when we went for the override, to Joan's point, the district prior to any of us at this table, I wasn't even here, it was before me, they did make a lot of cuts over and over in a lot of areas. And PD went, and curriculum refresh went. And that's where I'm looking back at the nine years of sitting in the seat and all the discussion and all the votes and all the investments that I was part of making. It wasn't the PD, it wasn't the curriculum refreshes, it wasn't technology, now to talk out of the other side of my mouth. It was in staff development. I don't want to see any of that go away. And then on the flip side, we have to be really realistic. This town needs to be realistic about who our students are and our high-need demographic. And the wraparound services, the transportation, the nursing, the social workers that I know Ms. Davey brought up, the adjustment counselors, we will not thrive as a district without those wraparound services. And I think that is a conversation that cannot only be on the school system, because way too much in this society is expected for schools to fix. And part of what we need to talk about at BBC with our town counterparts is how is this town supporting our students and their families? Because there's wraparound services, like with extended day, that did not go the way that I had hoped when the town took it over. There's a CFCE grant that we transferred to the town that I'm worried about. There's the Impact NORAD work, there's the mental health first aid work that currently lives on the town side that could go away because they don't have a sustainability plan. And all of those things do impact our students and our staff and learning.
Yeah.
Just for the, just for the record, so it's really clear. So we're not looking at reducing $7 million next year, next year's budget. I just wanted to make the folks that are watching that today know that's not what we're looking at. Ms. Stewart brings up some great points, something where we could be in a few years, where we talk about overrides. So I appreciate all the comments. I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that for next year.
But Mr. Luff, that is going to come up at BBC, because there are some people on the town side who do have that expectation. So although I don't want that to happen in our next public meeting with budget balancing, that figure may come up. So it's something that could be asked of us to look at creating a budget with anywhere between $4 and $7 million less for next year, because as we talked about last budget cycle and the budget cycle before, the town infuses a lot of free cash into the operating budget. And I understand why the Finance Commission has this question of what does your budget look like without the free cash? So I do, I do think, unfortunately, that will be part of the budget discussion this year, unless Anne Marie, you think differently?
No, I think it will be. I think absolutely. And preparing ourselves for what would, you know, because you don't want to fall off a cliff in two years, you know, I think there'll be a hard discussion this year about what can we, what can we, you know, decrease to slide more seamlessly into a really bad year in a couple of years, but...
And we will be looking at reductions in FY27. I mean, we always should be looking at what we can reduce in any fiscal year, right? That's what we should be doing. I will not be bringing you a preliminary budget with $7 million in cuts separate. I just, I won't do that. I don't think it's fair to any staff members who are here that are likely going to stay because there is free cash right now that can be infused to go into FY27. I think the town will support us for next year. We will need to internally figure out what we may have to do and make some reasonable reductions next year, but there's no chance that I'm bringing you a $7 million reduction budget. I will bring you ideas. I will consider some of the ideas that you have brought today in the preliminary budget, but there's just no way we can sustain in one year. And I don't want people to think that we're not going to have some funding to have a level service next year. I just want to make that.
David, one more thing. I know I brought this up before, like, when we do, like, the quarterly report and everything, but I do think we really have to paint the full story this year of the full funding. And we get at it in little bits and pieces here and there. We need to write the book. We need to, we need to be very clear that for special education, this amount comes from the operating budget, but this amount comes from grants. And same with ELE and everything, like, the full picture. How much money does it take to run this district? Not just the money appropriated at a town meeting, but all funds.
If there's nothing new, just watching time, right? This is one of those conversations that is just beginning, so this is not the last time we're going to visit this. I think that this was hopefully helpful and productive to you, Dr. Luff, to just sort of get some of that information. And I know that, you know, sort of all of us own it collectively, but also as bits and pieces, where we have certain people on, you know, BBC and, you know, Budget Sub and different parts. So just making sure we, you know, stay open, keep the communication. I mean, I think that the thing is, is that this committee has a real grasp on its responsibility and what we're facing. And I think it's just a matter of those continued discussions as we go through, you know, the budget process to get there.
And it will give me a good idea, as I develop the preliminary budget for '27, the kind of things I might look at, you know, when we're looking at the possibilities for next year. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone, for that. Moving into our consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Pleasure of the committee. And that is just to members of the committee.
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Anne Marie motions to approve. Joan seconds. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. I will entertain a vote. I do need to poll. Joan?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
Teresa?
I'm going to abstain because there wasn't there, David.
Okay. I will do the same. So that passes 3, 0 with 2 abstentions. Thank you for that. Moving on, we will go into our school committee addenda. I will start online, so Anne Marie, I will start with you.
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Joan?
I have no addenda this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Judith?
I just want to add a quick question circling back to the school building surplus. Are you, who's going to further that conversation and determine what the monies can be used for in the future?
That's an excellent question. So I had spoken to Dr. Luff, and we're going to reach out to, we reached out to our council just to gather any information they have around rules, laws, what happens with that. And then sort of that parallel track is, you know, I've pushed and MSBA has started to talk about it, because really, once we finish the sort of ending walking trails and paths and figure out everything around the fields, you know, although things, you know, like the reimbursement and sort of the money spent and that sometimes lags behind a little bit, it's like, we'll know in the next six months, like, what we're going to have left and sort of where that goes and what that process looks like.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
No? Teresa?
Yeah. First, I want to congratulate, Jeff Kerr had informed us that our marching band just had some pretty amazing accomplishments recently. So they, sorry, I had the email open, then I lost it. I think they are the U.S. Band's MA State Champions, which is amazing. So congratulations to them. And then I know we're going to hear more about this at an upcoming meeting, but also four of our high school singers were also accepted into the ACDA Eastern Conference Trouble Choir. So we do continuously hear of some pretty amazing accomplishments from our students and staffs within the fine arts realm. So congratulations to them. Want to remind everybody that we do have our wellness fair, our Second Annual Wellness Fair, on November 15th at the high school from 10 to 2. It is free. Please join us. We have a lot of really great things planned for all ages, all of the different domains of wellness. We would love to see you there. Encouraging everybody to follow along in the budget discussions. I know sometimes they're tedious and boring, and you don't know what we're talking about, but it's really important to be engaged. So as I mentioned, Dr. Luff, Mr. Mannion, Anne Marie, and I will be at the Finance Commission meeting on November 20th, meeting with our colleagues, talking about our budget this year so far. Town meeting, obviously, is next Thursday, November 13th, where we're hoping for town support around putting more money into our Special Education Stabilization Fund. Anne Marie will soon announce and post when our Budget Balancing Committee meeting is. There's just a lot of budget discussions happening now, really through March. I know sometimes in March, people come to our budget hearing. I know we're all very busy, but I would just encourage you to participate and engage with us throughout. You can speak to us at any of our public comments. You can email us. If you email us individually, we are allowed to write back. If you email us as a full school committee, it is our policy that our chair, David Hiltz, responds on our behalf. But please do engage with us. Let us know your thoughts and questions. So thank you.
Okay. And to me, just a couple of things. First, I just want to shout out Mr. Joe Kidd and Mr. Paul Ricardi and the facility staff. You may have noticed that our school committee room is a little bit different. We made some changes. So we've sort of tightened the U, brought people closer. We have some new technology that is in here that we did get at no cost, which is wonderful. We love a zero, zero-line budget item, just to update us a little bit and sort of make the function of the room a little bit more efficient, which is... the function of the room a little bit more efficient, which is nice. So thank you to those groups for that. My kind of theme, I like to use the addenda just to sort of address things and share opinions, but sort of the theme is hard choices. So, you know, we have a couple of things, obviously, with the budget coming up, not just this year, but in years forward, we are going to have some challenges. Along with that, I know that, you know, we've called it redistricting, reconfiguration, you know, what it may be with, you know, the elementary schools. And this is something that I say, one of the hardest things about this seat is, no matter what decision you make, you're, no one, everyone is never going to be happy. You know, part of our job is to make decisions based on the information that we have and try to make the best, best decision for the most amount of people, and that is not always easy. I think through both of these processes, I think since I have been on here, the budget process has been very open and transparent on the school side. And when it comes to, you know, having been involved with the redistricting piece, you know, again, as I had said earlier before we started the conversation, this came, this all started because we built a 5'3" middle school, and that's where that has led us in sort of the next iteration of our elementaries. You know, we have what that vision is. This is not something that is new, that has sprung on people. This has been three years' worth of work. You know, we indeed did delay this a year because people's concern with so much movement. You know, and I say that not to, just to point out how we've done that, but, you know, we know that, you know, we have a vision, and we think the vision is going to be the best for the NORAD public schools. We know not everyone will agree with that, but I just ask that, you know, you hear us and you get involved in that process in the manner in which we have. We've done forums before, there will be another forum. Remind me, Monday, November 17th at 6:30 PM. Do we have a location for that?
We're going to be in this, hmm? Sorry. We're going to be in the Savage Center.
Okay.
If, I get multiple members that want to come out and be here that we can't fit, we'll probably move it to the Coakley, but now we're in the Savage.
Great. So for now, that would be at the Savage, and I would encourage people to come, and that's, you know, where Dr. Luff is, you know, running that, that would be more of a, you know, you can ask questions and get answers, where if you do come here, we encourage you, please share your opinions, but obviously, when it's public comment, we don't get to answer back. That's part of that. Our job is just to listen in that thing. So thank you for everyone, past, present, and future, that has worked on this. Dr. Luff, thank you for your work. I think you've outlined and made pretty clear, and sort of, to quote one of the other members of the committee, highlighted what may be a future sort of pressure point there, and we're talking about it a couple of months early, and that conversation will continue as well. The last piece that I have, I just want to address from, this is a couple of weeks ago now, but I think, you know, reading it, I think maybe it was taken out of context, but some of my comments on MCAS. But, you know, it's not to say that I'm excusing some of the scores or I don't believe in, you know, accountability. I was someone who was rare as an educator that believed we should have kept MCAS as a graduation requirement, and part of that is, is because part of MCAS's job is to test and check where kids are. Yes, it's a snapshot, but it's also to make sure that, you know, whether you go to Brockton High School, whether you go to Doherty Memorial High School, whether you go to, you know, Springfield Central High School, name a bunch of others, that, you know, Biology 9 looks the same across that, that Algebra 1 looks the same across that. And once again, we have allowed outside groups to overturn a law. The way that the law is written leaves it wide open, and now we're beginning, as I read today, that we're going to begin end-of-course tests. So the cycle continues, and as a professional educator, that is frustrating, because the MCAS system and no system is ever perfect, but I thought for a long time it was good at what it does, and we are now sort of going to enter this, this zone where there's a lot of, it's fluid and it's open for a long time, and I'm concerned about that. So I just wanted to address that. I think the comment, sort of as I read it, kind of was taken out of context, and I just wanted to clarify that, to do that. And I sound long-winded, so I apologize for that. But thank you for that. Just a reminder to everyone, well, no, we have to adjourn first. So to the committee, pleasure of the committee, do I have a motion?
No motion.
Teresa moves. Do I have a second? Judith seconds. I do need to poll, because we are hybrid. Joan?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yeah.
And I am a yes as well. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Just a reminder, the next time, we will have a meeting, will be Monday, December 3rd, 7:00 PM here at the Savage Center. Have a wonderful rest of November, Thanksgiving break, Thanksgiving, all of those things, and enjoy your time. Good evening.